Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
I'm here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda?
No approval.
Second.
Called in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, um, Martin is not with us tonight, and you can see he put a copy of his report in the, uh, in his packet. If anybody has any questions, we need to go back to him with, or if there's any that I may have any kind of an update on.
Anything new on Merchant Street?
That house?
Uh, I want to talk about that later.
That you can answer? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The only thing I'll, and does anybody have anything on it?
Merchant Street?
No, on the administrator's report. I want to talk about, we lost some businesses here in town, which there's not much we can do about it. I mean, it, they declined. Sales tax is declining, I see here in the Sun Times news, but something I stumbled across this week that's alarming to me. I don't know when this started, but I expect some answers right shortly. How comes all the DWIs is run through the county and not our city?
Uh, I think you can, Eric, who'd be back there, can you answer? Eric, could you answer that? I'm sorry.
What's the mayor always do?
This has actually been a topic, first of all, I apologize, I'm on vacation this week, I didn't shave before the meeting, but, um, this has been a topic that we've actually been discussing quite a bit lately and are planning on meeting with Frank pretty quickly. Uh, the state prosecutor has, has gone to a no refusal policy for the county, um, that has significantly reduced the liability to our department and, uh, effectively enhances the success rate of DWIs. Um, and it's something that we need to talk to Frank about and see if, if he's willing to honor the same policy to, to help with prosecution on that and, and make us more effective as far as our job. The, the workload on a DWI prior to the no refusal policy was a couple hours, two to three hours on, on processing a DWI and getting back on the street. Under the new no refusal policy has, has turned that around to a half an hour, if that. So it's something that we're hoping to extend to, to the city and, and be able to run all of our DWIs through the city. Uh, but for now, it's just a, just an effectiveness and an efficient, uh, means of, of processing the DWIs and getting our limited resources back on the street.
I can't go to the voters and ask them for a bond issue and look at the money we've lost on all these DWIs. We've lost thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, because I'm sure a DWI is probably, what, five grand plus?
Not for the city, the city's fine on that is $300, $500, I believe.
Well, okay, like 500 times whatever a year, and I, I can't see that.
Well, this is, I mean, this has not been in place the entire year, we're looking at, at maybe, uh, five or 10 DWIs since, since the, the policy has been in place. Uh, and it is something that we certainly intend to, to bring back to the city, but for now, and I'd be happy to discuss the, uh, legality of it at a later time with you. It's just something that, that is...
I wish, though, when the first one went to county, we can have work sessions on tip and everything else, but we can't have a work session on fines?
Well, and, and if I could follow up, there are some DWIs that were not allowed to run through the city. After the first DWI, it's, it's mandated that it goes through state court. So there's a, a certain percentage of these that, that wouldn't be able to run through city regardless, because they have pre, prior DWI convictions or prior alcohol convictions, and, and we're, we're limited on that. I mean, we can't run it through the city, it has to go through state prosecution on those.
Eric, can I have your written?
It's, it's changed with, with, as you're fed, I think we, there were several arrested over that weekend, but we were at five?
I think it was, I thought when we talked, I thought it was 14.
14.
Maybe since the fiscal year.
And since, since the policy was enacted, maybe, maybe five of those have, have gone through the state.
I will say that policy was not discussed with you.
No, and, and it's, it is going to be, it's, it's something that we're, we're open to.
The, the standard, a standard fine for a first time DWI is, is about a $500 fine plus court costs. Um, and that's, that's basically what would normally happen unless there's aggravating circumstances, and the chief is correct, if it's, it's not the first, it can no longer go through the unit court.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Just got any staff reports and committee reports?
Um, I'm not the liaison for the, um, Community Access Television Board, but Bob Mueller sent me some information and wanted me to just mention that, uh, recently, at the end of the, end of July, was the 20-year anniversary of the formation of the St. Genevieve Community Access Television Board, and I've got a couple, um, articles here that he sent to me that all passed around, it's pretty interesting, but, um, congratulations on 20 great years to the board and, uh, look forward to more.
Good deal.
Okay, anything else?
I ain't talked to the Jure de Fed Committee yet, but I'm gonna propose, I think there's an ordinance, what on, you can only set up at 10 o'clock at night?
Set, you know, set up?
Set up on the street, 10 o'clock on Friday night.
Well, that's awful, why you say it?
Well, that's the way it's been, but I'm gonna...
Was that an ordinance or just one of that?
Thinking it's an ordinance, but I...
An ordinance, probably a rule.
I'm gonna try getting that changed at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, I think that's Jure de Fed rule, we don't have an ordinance for that, I wouldn't think, do we Frank?
Once you set the boots up at 10 o'clock, they gotta be where the fire trucks, everything can get through there, so I don't understand why they couldn't set them up at 6, because this past Friday night, it was just chaos, everybody fighting at one time trying to get in there, and I don't blame the people, they grow from Oklahoma and they're wanting to get to bed, they don't get done till 2, 3 o'clock, 1 o'clock, whatever, setting up and then they go get a motel room.
You know what I mean?
I, I don't believe that it's under ordinance, my understanding is in, in years past it's been, because we moved it from midnight to 10, uh, but with some businesses still that were remaining open past 9 o'clock down there, there were some hesitance in shutting down the streets, but I, I don't believe it's, it's governed under ordinance, I think it's just a, just a personal policy.
But still, all night long, you get through there.
Right.
I just think it'd be a good idea to move it to 6, but...
Yeah, I, I don't see where that'd be.
When the Jure de Fed Committee asks for street closures next year, could they just change the time that they ask for the?
And, and I'll, I'll research the ordinance in the meantime, but I, I don't believe it's, it's governed under the ordinance.
A lot of vendors ask for that too, Friday night. You know, I don't think that'd be a bad deal at all, no.
I don't know why you wouldn't be there at 10 o'clock trying to set something up.
They're all doing it though.
Yeah, yeah. Getting better.
Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, we only have the, uh, minutes for the regular meeting on the 24th.
I'm sorry, I forgot to print the closing out. Get enough.
We'll get them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Called in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, Old Business Bill Number 3980, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Jen fiscal year 2014 budget relating to the General Fund Number 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Alderman Houch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero nos, Bill Number 3980 now becomes ordinance 3921.
Okay, um, before we get to the, the next one, which is, uh, certainly calling for the election, or putting the fire truck issue on the ballot, um, I, I do want to address one thing that I usually let things go in the paper, because you let them go, they, a lot of times, uh, what was said, um, may or may not be true, and, uh, the more you, the more you discuss it, the more aggravated people get over it, but, uh, there was a, a, a comment that was made, and maybe person was misquoted, um, after the election or after the vote last, um, at the last meeting. Um, but I, I did want to address, because there, there's something in here that I think is implied that I'm, I'm a little upset about, and that was certainly Mr. Prince's comment about, when we had the committee meetings, and number one, we had the committee meetings that the books, so to say, were not available, um, to the committee. Well, I, I can tell you, the first meeting, I passed out a copy of the budget, and the budget was gone over by that committee, and also the fire tags was discussed at that committee meeting, and the budget was gone over, the $110,000 budget, and, and, and the committee did look for places in there where expenses could be cut, and it was, we spent a lot of time talking about it in that committee, but was, what was said here, and I guess what mostly upsets me, is the implication in here that the books were not open and the books were not available. The implication there, and maybe you were misquoted, that there's something secret going on with the books, and that, that's an insult to the staff, it's an insult to the other seven members of this board, that you would think that something like that was going on. And then the second that, you had all the opportunity in the world at the work session to discuss anything that you wanted to talk about, but we didn't talk about it in the work session. If you wanted to look, if you want to look at them tomorrow, if there's any citizens that want to look at the books, so to say, the budget, you can come in City Hall any day that you want to, you could ask that night, but there was no discussion at all about that. And as far as access to the truck, committee members could ask anytime they wanted to look at the truck more if they wanted, we spent a night looking at the truck, we talked about the truck, and as I said in the work session, you had a 30-year-old truck, you could've went out and bought a used truck, the estimate, there was one estimate for $30,000 to fix it, the, to get, to take it to somewhere else, the next per, the next closest place of looking at fire trucks or, or places that worked on them was Springfield, we would've had them, to pay them to come up here, or we would've had to, to, to take the truck down there. There was questions, a lot of discussion about the motor in the truck, and finally it came out, nobody really cared about the motor. Motor was basically fine, if it used a quart of oil every time they went out on a fire, big deal, it wasn't the question of the motor, but it finally was determined, why would you put $30,000 in a 30-year-old truck when you could probably add another 30 or 40 to it and buy a 10-year newer truck? So that, that kinda ended, that discussion on the truck kinda ended at that point. I don't know why, again, I don't know where you were at at the work session, I think everybody else was here, but I don't know where you were at, so, with that...
Yes, sir. I think somehow, some people on this board got lost about what we were talking about. Uh, for some reason, some people made it a vendetta, theirs, that they didn't want a fire truck, okay, that's, we don't need it, we don't want it, that's fine, that's your opinion, you think we don't need it. I, myself, looked at it saying, well, we don't need it today, we probably don't, but what about something that would happen later on where we could save lives and not have that truck? I don't think, sometimes you, you, and I, I don't want to point anybody out, okay, I'm not gonna do that, but I think you lost that somehow, of what could possibly save lives. I think you lost that whole comprehension right there. You know, it was just something that you didn't want to do, so we're not gonna do it, and that's it, so I'm done, Dick, I'm sorry.
Two of the things that the committee talked about, two issues that the committee talked about, the people sitting in here that were on the committee and some in the audience that were at every meeting, it was a committee, it was talked about in the committee, it was also talked about in the work session. Two things that was talked about was that the board had to be unified as far as putting it up for a vote to the people, was one, and let it up to the voters. Number two was, we had to leave personalities out of this.
That flew out the window, didn't it?
Both of them flew out the window.
Well, if I can add something, it'd be a lot cheaper to spend $30,000 than $600,000. I mean, it's not like that truck couldn't be fixed. I live in a 38-year-old house, that's okay, I don't need a brand-new one, it'd be nice, but I don't want to put myself in death over it. I think the, from some on the committee I talked to, it was kind of the department saying, fix it, still we can put it in service.
Fire Department, I will say, was very adamant about their issues with the, the, the issues with the truck, the safety features that were on the truck, the new technology, I guess, so to say, and, and the, um, issues with a 30-year-old, um, truck, again.
Our volunteers don't feel that a ladder is safe to get up on, and they say, I'm not gonna get up on.
You know, if it's fixable for 30,000, it's a lot cheaper to come up at 30,000 than 600,000.
I'm not a mechanic, I'm not an expert, I don't, I don't know that it can be fixed, I'm hearing both sides from all kinds of different people, yes, it can be fixed, no, it can't, we need a brand-new truck, this one's fine, and it's hard, I don't know what to believe anymore, I don't know who to believe anymore, and, you know, I, after the last meeting, I was a little perturbed at the two that voted against putting an issue on the ballot for the voters to decide, because we're not saying, yes, let's buy a fire truck, we're saying, let's put an issue on the ballot for the voters to decide on. But since then, everything I hear is, no, I'm voting no, I'm voting no, I'm voting no. So it costs, what, a couple, few thousand dollars to put an issue on a ballot?
Six.
Six thousand dollars?
That was the estimate.
And at this point, I feel like there's such a bad taste in the community that it overwhelmingly is a no vote, that we would be throwing that $6,000 away.
I agree completely, me too, uh, 'cause it's...
It's unfortunate, because...
It was overwhelmingly a no vote when they elected it, or when they failed it last time.
Again.
There was a different approach this time.
Yeah.
Well, even though it's only a 10-year bond issue for a lot of the voters, that is a lifetime.
Joe, are you not considered, Joe, the, the...
Well, hold on a second, you guys all said your piece, I was sitting here quiet, let me talk. You guys are talking about, just in our, our last thing and on the front page of the paper this week, it said, we're having, got a budget shortfall, or we're gonna have, ask the departments to reduce their budgets by 5, 10, 20 percent, you talk about life-saving, let's try to cut the police department further, you know, that are out there every day.
What the hell's that gonna do with life-saving, okay?
All right, if we can't afford to be...
Yeah, we're talking two different things.
No, I wasn't done, I didn't interrupt you. We can't afford our basic services now. We can't afford our basic services, and we're gonna go out and spend almost $700,000 on something? Where's our bond issue to fix the things that our basic services should be fixing? Our streets, our sidewalks, all this other stuff? We have a duty to the taxpayers to spend their money wisely. Sure, I got a, what, 20 something-year-old truck at home, does it have all the bells and whistles and safety features that a brand-new truck does? No, it doesn't, but it fits my needs. We're worried about the ISO, fix the truck for 30 or 40,000, we maintain our ISO, I don't care if they use it or not, we're still gonna maintain our ISO, that's what is important here, maintaining our ISO. So, we have a duty to the taxpayers, I'm not saying never replace the truck, we can't afford it, and to go out and spend $700,000 when we can't even meet our, our basic needs, that's ridiculous.
Alderman Prince, I think that there's a significant difference between what you consider basic needs and emergency services.
All right, well, we're talking about cutting emergency services to fund, or to help fund our regular budget, you know, we talked about it at the last meeting.
What are we cutting?
Go to the police department and ask for a 5 or 10 percent decrease?
Do we never ask that?
Not yet, but it's being discussed.
Do what?
It's being discussed, and we'll be coming up here in the next few weeks, so it's something we all gotta think about. Are you done, Joe?
Uh, no, I can go on and on, but I'm not...
I just think we, we missed the big picture of this, or some people missed the big picture of this.
Yep.
The option was, the vote was not a personal preference, but to allow the voters to, again, take a second look at it, with the only difference...
That truck can be sitting in here.
Mr. Prince, Alderman Prince, please, with the only difference being, uh, this, this would end, right, it had an end date, 10 years.
There, by the way, there is a misprint in here that one was supposed to fix, it does say 20 years.
That's, I have a question I'm coming at. The, it was overwhelmingly defeated the last time before the public. I, I was ashamed of the way it played out with becoming personal, in my opinion, when I read articles in the paper on Sun Times, it appeared to be personal, it appeared to be arguments, not over the validity of why we need a fire truck. I don't, I don't, I personally don't care about our ISO ratings, because, Joe, I think you're, you, you did your homework and you know, they're gonna raise their insurance when they want to for whatever reason, I, I get that, that happens in my business every year. But, um, I think we need this apparatus available to the city's outstanding firefighters. I don't know how to pay for it. I think there was a committee formed, the committee did good work, and a lot of hours were put in by a lot of people. They don't really know how to pay for it either, so we kinda came down to this. If it were on the ballot, I would vote yes, but I don't think if it comes on the ballot again, that it will pass, and I agree with Alderman, Alderwoman Caldwell that to spend $6,000 to put this on the ballot, when I think that it will be defeated soundly, again, because even though it, it does sunset in 10 years, there's no real campaign developed to try to promote this as a yes on the ballot, and I think in, in the past week, we've already got back to this personal, uh, almost name-calling that could escalate at some point, and good people would probably regret that, or anybody to even conceive that that's what it's getting down to. So, as we look at this in just a few moments, and Pam reads off this proposed ordinance, I am not going to vote to waste what I feel like would be a misuse of public funds to try to get this to pass again, because I just don't think that it will. Um, I'm not going to, uh, make a motion for approval, if somebody else does, I'm not gonna make a second for approval. I think it's, it's really a big problem that we can't figure out a way to fund a piece of apparatus that solely, for no other reason, that our firefighters, I'm not a firefighter, but our trained and outstanding reputation of our fire department says, we need this, and I wish we could figure out a way to pay for it, I don't think this is the way to pay for it. That's all I have to say about it. I don't, I don't think, I just don't, uh, I can't, I can't promote, I can't vote yes on this tonight, because I just don't think that, that, I think it's already too late.
Yeah.
It's already too late, after a week, it's already too late that there's any possibility this would ever have a chance to pass this time.
Now, to address the name-calling, let's go back to the first one. I put out what I put out, he had a rebuttal, his rebuttal, he called us all cave people, the name started, our name-calling started, hold on a minute, and I replied with my reply, and that was it. This time, I was gonna stay out of it, uh, the one thing that he was referring to, uh, newspaper contacted me, asked me for a statement, and I'm, I'm allowed to give my opinion, right or wrong, I'm allowed to give my opinion, and that's how my constituents, the ones that voted for me to put me in this chair, that's how they feel as well. So, if somebody asked me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what I need, what I feel I need to say. As far as the, uh, this last guest commentary I had in there, uh, the person that put that out, the fire chief, took a portion of my comment, and I guarantee if he would've took a portion of yours and used it to his advantage, even though it wasn't the full comment and misrepresented what you said, you would've had a beef with that, and that's what my beef was. I was staying out of it this time until he brought me into it, and I was approached by the Herald to issue a statement, and I did.
As you continue to point your pen at me, I'll tell you that I would've took the high road and not said anything in the paper and talked privately, and these comments just perpetuate what, what the mayor just said, that we really need to consider stepping above.
It starts on both levels, and it isn't coming from their side either, so...
Well, there was a chance to step above that when we had a chance to be unified as a board, and we didn't do that. I think there are very good people involved, and I would hate to see this escalate, uh, to harm any of those good people's reputation.
Well, it's on the agenda, and as I said, um, there is a, there is a, Martin was, uh, we did pick it up between the first reading and this one, it does say 20 years, and that is supposed to say 10, if it is going to be considered. So, um, with that, Pam, would you read Bill Number 3981?
Can I make one more comment?
Oh, absolutely.
What was our ISO rating 2013?
It would've been four.
And we were checked for, in 2013, are we checked every year for ISO?
It's just kinda randomly, from what I, right, it's just randomly.
So you don't know if we've been checked in 2013 or not?
No, I'm almost sure, we weren't, I know we weren't.
Question I'd like to ask Mick, but he's not here, and...
No, I know we weren't. I think the last time we were checked would've been when it was dropped, I'm pretty sure was the last time that we were checked, and that would've been in 1009 or something like that.
Okay, well, I didn't know if it's a yearly thing, a two-year thing, three-year thing that your ISO rated on, so...
All right, uh, Bill Number 3981, second reading.
An ordinance calling a bond election in the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith.
Right, hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Okay, no second. Bill that. Okay, New Business, Bill Number 3983, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a three-party payment agreement with Missouri Department of Natural Resources and Copperland Engineering Services Report.
Motion to approve.
Second. Called in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Bill Number 3984, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of St.
Why is this brought about?
Is this something new?
Yeah.
No, this is, this is every year. It goes to the Ethics Commission. It's required by them. Actually, you do it every two years, but it's due again this year, so.
Okay, all right.
And if I could get a second, so I could get it sent in.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Move for second reading.
Second.
All in favor, second reading of bill number thirty-nine eighty-four?
Aye.
opposed? Second reading, bill number thirty-nine eighty-four?
An ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain officials.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number thirty-nine eighty-four now becomes ordinance thirty-nine twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, uh, comments from, by any ordinance?
Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Fisher. I've been down here several times, and it's obvious you had a heated debate over the one for the fire department, uh, on the ballot for the tax. I've been down here several times. I've talked about it, and it, obviously, it's a dead issue, is kinda what I got out of this. Um, it's real simple about, they're talking about this ISO rating. I think it's a total scam. Let it go. Don't worry about it. It's not gonna bother your tax, your, uh, insurance rate at all. They're telling you it is. I don't believe it, because I didn't call my insurance company. It's not a big deal. It ma, it barely makes a dent in it. Take the truck-
But one thing, and I don't, I'm not obviously gonna argue with you, but it certainly could affect the quality of our fire department, could it not?
As far as what? As quality of what? They got brand-new trucks? Or fairly, they got fairly updated trucks? This, you spent one point three million on the firehouse.
I, I'm done. Go ahead with your-
You know what I mean? You spent one point three million on the firehouse. What more do you need?
Gee, I don't know.
What's next? Is it a helicopter? Sitting on standby? This guy, Alderman, down here commenting, you know, he's worried about saving lives. Well-
If we could afford one, yeah.
Yeah. Well, put ten of them out there, and you never know, you never know what this might happen.
Well, you know-
You know, you just, you can't go by that.
Just in this God.
Go ahead, I'm, go ahead.
To me, get rid of the truck completely and solve the issue. It, it is that simple. It really is.
You, you could get rid of all of them and solve the issue, couldn't you?
Well, if the fire department wants this truck so bad, as I said before, do like Zell, Bloomzell, and the other fire departments, they go out and they raise some money themselves. And if the community, community supports it, and I support the Zell as well as the Bloomzell, anytime they have something, I always show up. They raise money for their own things. I don't see any reason why, if they really want it, they can do that themselves. And the Alderman's sitting here, I don't know what his name is, and I've said it before, if they want, if the fire department town wants it, go around every house, knock on the door, and sell the fire tax like, like the other communities do.
We're, we're different than the other communities.
Why are you different?
Because we're an incorporated city, and we have a fire department.
Well, okay, don't call it a fire tax. Ask for a donation. If you came to every one of my places I have in town and asked for thirty dollars per year, per place, I'd write you a check of one thing, thing about it, what bothered me at least. The whole idea is putting the tax on there and shoving it down my throat and trying to confiscate it from me, and then all of a sudden, you, you show, you got the tax on the ballot, you got it in place, and all of a sudden, it's short. Then you wanna raise the rate automatically. That's the problem I would have. Um, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Weiner.
I guess you know I'd be up here.
Well, absolutely.
I'm not gonna bore you too much, 'cause I lie a lot, too. Mayor, absent city administrator, Board of Aldermen, and the listening audience, my name is Carl Weiner. I live at eleven-fifty-eight by the Spring Trail. I know this is a hard thing for the board to decide these things, but I've come to you before, and I told you that I have issues with the ISO rating. They don't base your insurance on that. You might think they do. I have two insurance agencies that's willing to sell me insurance a hell of a lot cheaper than what I'm getting, paying for now, and they don't use the ISO rating. But let's forget about the ISO rating. Is there anybody on this board can tell me who or why they are pushing for a seventy-five-foot ladder truck? There's somebody behind this. Now, is it you, Mayor, or is it Miss, Mr. Swett, or is it some other concern, some other people?
I, I think the, honestly, of course, I'm not sure if we have, you know, if we will go back and revisit this, but I just will answer your question quickly. I, I think the, the fire chief and the fire department were happy, they were okay with even a pumper.
Well, listen, I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say you're right or wrong with that statement, but I sat in these committee meetings-
Yes, you did.
-over at the firehouse. And there was really no way to determine who or what was behind this, except all I heard was, "We need a seventy-five-foot ladder to rescue somebody in the river." Look at me. They, they, there's no, there's no way that they could use that to rescue somebody in the river.
I don't remember hearing the, the river-
We'll get over that. Mr. Mayor, we'll get over that, okay? But, the thing that upsets me now is in the July sixteenth Herald, and Mr. Toma said that there was some pledges made. Now, if there was pledges made, why isn't the people aware who made them and how much? Or are you gonna stick to people for the full amount on their taxes for ten years and sock that other money into some other... See, these are issues that a lot of people don't bring up. I'm, I'm sorry. I look at everything as something that somebody is trying to pull the wool over you. Go ahead, Mr.
Mr. Weiner, what do you think the secret agenda is?
Sir?
What do you think that they're, whoever's behind all this is headed with it?
Well, there's only two people I could say, and I'm not gonna say it right now. But there is somebody behind this.
Whenever the discussion was in the last election, there were some preliminary discussions that were, were had with a few companies about would you be willing to make, would you be willing to, to, to donate. There was actually a letter sent out, and, and we did, we did have some answers back from those. But alls it would've done was, would've eliminated the, it would've just paid it off that much quicker.
But like I said, you know, if somebody would really give me a bona fide reason why you need a ladder truck, that you can't, let's, let's do something, buy a used one if you have to, if you don't wanna spend the money on the one you got out there now.
Yeah, I think we kinda beat that one to death with, I, I think we were explaining this board, and so was the committee, as far as what advantages a ladder truck have, not just necessarily being able to go up high, but being able to go out over things. But I, you know, I don't know. And, you know, if you remember the discussions, I, I-
I, I remember one when I was over there.
That, uh, the fire department said, we, we could, they were okay with even a pumper.
Well, they ain't gonna bring all this up, so, because you all got a lot of things you've gotta do, handle.
Well, we're gonna, we're just gonna have to go back and regroup and see if we got any other options.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Or I'm gonna make a comment. I don't think anybody that's associated with the fire department has a right to vote on this session. It's a conflict of interest. Now, I had a three hundred and fifty dollar attorney that sat in a board meeting one night and told me it wasn't a conflict unless fire department offered the Alderman a truck to drive, then that would be a conflict. But my same theory on this is if the volunteer fire department people would tell this Alderman that they won't have nothing to do with him if you don't vote for what they want, that's a conflict. Now, think about that. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Brownie, four ninety-eight Merchant. I'd like to thank the people that's been helping me with the problem I've been having, and my family's problem. Alderman Teddy, I just approached the chief last week or whenever. Lieutenant Crump came back to my house yesterday, and I'm not gonna get into a lot of details right now, but it looks like there's some light down in the tunnel now on these kids running them up. And I, I appreciate the help, because the past week it escalated to guns being pulled, people getting spit it on in their face. And all I'm gonna say is maybe the next Alderman meeting, I can be here and tell you guys what happened. But right now, I just see light down in the tunnel, and I appreciate it. And one other thing, on, on Merchant Street, on Fifth Street, between Market and Jefferson, before the sidewalk was put in by the cemetery, it wasn't too bad. But now, with the two-way traffic, oh my God, this past weekend, I was, without exaggerating, there was gridlock where you, cars couldn't move. I was backing cars up on Merchant to try to get people through. Is there any way that street could be made between Market and Jefferson, one-way traffic? Either way would be fine, because it, it's impossible. I mean, when there's a car on one side, a car, a pickup truck with, you know, mirrors for, trailer mirrors, no way, he ain't going down that street. And it, it needs to be a one-way street.
Will allow parking on one side? Don't, don't, don't we allow parking on one side, then?
Well, you can park on both sides right now, but it's two-way traffic. And it's impossible for, I mean, one car can go down, that's fine. But you get two cars coming the opposite way, it, you can't do it. If there's a car on both sides of that street. And like I said, I was backing traffic up over the weekend.
I, I know we-
And it could be dangerous. There's like a house fire, and there was two cars there. There's no way a fire truck would even get in unless he wanted to blow the cars out of the way.
I went through there also. And it probably needs to be limited parking, at least one side.
Yeah. That or one-way, you know, on that one, one stretch, because of-
You can barely get through that street.
Yeah. I mean, and that's, that's-
Will allow parking on both sides?
Yeah, yeah, I think we need-
I agree. I, I came from Riverview, and when I got down about Merchant, there would've been a car coming. I don't know who would've had to give. We both would've had the back and go the different route, so.
I think, I think the cemetery side, we need to just get away from parking over there altogether. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it is really, it's bad, especially when we have something in town.
Eric, would you, uh, take a look at, at that, maybe the summit, looking at eliminating parking on the cemetery side?
I'm wondering if maybe the signage didn't get put back up, but I, I thought a couple years ago, we addressed this before they even did the ordinance.
We went all through this.
I'm, I'm looking for the, yes.
School buses, we went through the whole thing.
I know we talked about it one time. I think it's in ordinance or any, but I'll, I'll research that.
Okay.
I know we, we talked about either alternating the one, one-way for the school buses to, to allow for school traffic both ways, making northbound only in the morning and, and southbound only in the afternoon, but, uh, you know, not obviously the best idea, but, um, I, I will research that. In fact, I'm looking it up now.
Because the only person that it would expect would be Gina Rose. She lives right down the corner. And that's the only, and she has no off-street parking, really. And she parks on Merchant, so whatever decision would be made, she'd be the one to be affected. Everybody else could live with whatever decisions made. It really is, I mean, try to get it one-way or parking on one side only or something.
Okay. We'll, we'll visit that again. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One more. That'll be one trouble. Uh, my first one is the house, the burned-down house next to me. Is it, is that a done deal?
It's getting close. It's getting closer. I, I can't really make any comments right now publicly, but it's getting, I will say it's getting close.
Well, because of a little feisty night here, you guys, I wanted to congratulate you all, if it was, for your quick action on that. I mean, I think I was here six, eight weeks ago, and Buck was scaring me, telling me it was gonna take five years.
Well, that, that-
It sounds like it's a pretty much-
I would hope by the next meeting, we would certainly be able to at least make an announcement of what's gonna happen.
That'd be awesome. Appreciate the good work. Uh, but the other reason I'm here was in support of my neighbor. Uh, he's talking like he might have good news, but I just don't understand how this has been allowed to go on all year. I don't know if, I guess you all know what's going on. Y'all, y'all forgot. Uh, probably back in December, a group of teenagers, I don't know if they live in our neighborhood or a close neighborhood, for some reason decided to pick on Bob. Uh, the usual kid stuff at first, but it's escalated through the months. Bob's been down here several times asking for help. Uh, he's asked the police for help. Don't know for sure what happened there. Um, he actually got a restraining order against one of the kids. A few weeks later, they came and arrested Bob. This kid's friends evidently made up, I can't say that, they, they alleged something against Bob. And the kids keep coming back. And what I mean by that, they'll drive down by his house with the windows down, screaming at the top of their lungs obscenities through our neighborhood. A few weeks ago, they haven't messed with me till a few weeks ago. I came home, uh, Bob and his, uh, wife, partner, they were outside right around where I parked my car, which I park it right next to his house, between my house. And he's all frantic, and I asked him what's going on. He said they just picked up one of my planters and tried to throw it through his window. I mean, this is not knocking on doors and ringing doorbells like we used to. They messed, fortunately. They had a very good shot. I wasn't real happy that they were on my property and taking stuff and trying to throw it through his window. I mean, I didn't see it. I didn't witness it. I did see the pot laying on the window, and I asked Bob immediately. Bob never lies to me. He has no reason to. He goes, "It just happened. They went that way." So, I took off after him. Couldn't find him. I don't know if they were on foot or on bikes. Um, he calls the police. A person came over, very nice officer, took a report. Really, we knew that nothing was gonna be done. We've been here enough and heard enough stories. These kids are juveniles. Seems like our police department, um, from what I understand, has, they can't do really anything with juveniles, uh, like they can people that are of age, which I think, to me, is pretty stupid. We're allowing teenagers to dominate our neighborhood, um, throwing rocks at him. They cut his head open with a rock. Over this past weekend, they drive by and they're pointing a gun at him. Now, they got- Now they got guns. That is, used to be the quietest neighborhood ever, and I don't understand, you know, what they have against Bob, don't know, it don't matter, but it's just, it's unrelenting, and it's getting pretty scary now. And like I said, this has been going on all year, eight months, and I would challenge anyone sitting here, if this was happening at your place or in your neighborhood, I think it would have been taken care of by now, somehow, some way. And I don't know if, um, if it's more of the juveniles or what, or if, you know, Bob's a little scrappy, and he speaks his mind, he's got tattoos, maybe they prejudged him, thought he was some crazy lunatic, none of this is happening. It is happening, and something's gotta give. Something's gonna happen. I mean, do somebody have to shoot him before something's done? Or worse yet, maybe the police come, maybe they end up shooting a kid. We need somebody's help. We pretty much were here begging last time. Rick, or Dick, you weren't here, I'm sorry. Uh, John, I don't think you were either. I mean, this is just absolutely nuts. It's absolutely nuts, and it's the same kids, and they know who they are. The kids don't care anymore. They know nothing's gonna be done, they'll do whatever they want.
I should think, I, I hope, I mean, what you're saying and what Bob's saying, I mean, I hope we're getting closer to some kind of a resolution here, so...
I hope we are, too, and it sounds like we are.
Yeah.
My question is, why has it taken eight months? It's a thousand feet from the police station. It's happening in this neighborhood, and from what I can understand, there's a, they're going to other neighborhoods. I mean, it's almost like free will. They can't do nothing to us, we're juveniles.
Buck, what, what we're saying right now, Wayne, is hopefully we're taking care of that problem right now.
I understand it.
You know, we, we can't go back and say what happened eight months ago, okay, we're, we're trying to take care of it right now.
I understand that.
All right.
My question is, why did it take eight months?
Well, I'm not quite sure of that.
I'm not either.
But we're trying to take care of it right now, and I think that's what we're working to work.
I understand it, and I do appreciate it. My concern is, why did it take so long? And I swear to God, you guys would be the same way, if it was happening at your house, Tom, I don't think it would have went on for eight months.
No.
Or Dick's house, it wouldn't have went on for eight months. There would have been a little bit more attention taken because you're a recognizable citizen. Uh, they probably would have took your word for it immediately, and I'm not criticizing the police department at all, because Bob really never had a witness to anything. These kids are smart. The only witness he had was the two people living in his house. The only, I've never seen any of them do it, I've heard it, I've seen the aftermath at my house, but I know it's a real thing. So I guess, what I'm saying is, I appreciate everything our public servants do, but I think, in this case, something slipped through the cracks.
I can assure you that I personally, and as fed up as you are and as Bob is, that there's some resolution hasn't taken place. Uh, and I, I think that several people at this table probably feel the same way, but I am confident that our city police department is following procedures and doing what they can.
I'm sure they are.
And I think it's a tough, tough deal.
Yeah, I'm not pointing fingers at the police. I don't wanna do that. I'm just wondering, it's the thing that they're juveniles is...
When you call out anybody at this table, I don't think that anybody at this table's any different than anybody sitting back there.
I agree.
Or at home right now.
I agree. But I don't know if it was more of a problem that maybe they didn't believe Bob, or he didn't have any witnesses, or the fact that they're just juveniles. I mean, is there, is that the, Mr. Crump, is it?
No, Bennett.
Bennett, I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett. Can I ask you that here?
On, on the cases that, that we have identified a suspect, the, the reports have been forwarded to the juvenile. On the cases where somebody's driving by and yelling, or somebody's throwing a pot and there's no, there's no suspects.
Correct.
You know, I, I've said for a long time, if we could throw away the constitution for a day, we'd have ten years worth of paperwork. You know, I know who's doing it, you know who's doing it.
Right.
But, but getting that to a point that, that you can present a case and, and get prosecution is, is a lot different. Uh, like I said, the cases that we've got suspects have been forwarded for, for prosecution through the juvenile system. Uh, the case that, that actually initiated all of this issue had, had been going through the juvenile system, and, and still is. Uh, you know, unfortunately, within the last few years, they've changed their procedures as far as the, the hierarchy of, of offenses that, that classify a stay in juvenile detention or referral up to the Sears Center, uh, and, and we're, we're the ones that are kinda holding the, the net and, and trying to filter out everything else.
So there's only certain areas where you can hold them or something in that area?
It's a one system, I mean, once they have so many, like, if it's a minor offense, so many, so many offenses creates a point or something to that effect, but, but as far as actually a violation that results in, in them going over and being detained, it's, it's a certain number of crimes, a robbery or, you know, things like that. So, so the cases that we have suspects, like I said, have been forwarded, and, and we've been pretty hot and heavy after juvenile to, to step it up and try to do something to get these, get these kids taken care of.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question, and I guess it's probably related to Steve on the water main break.
Yeah.
Are the residents notified about a water main break?
Residents are notified through channel seven ninety-eight.
Yeah, but what happens if it's in the middle of the night and they don't?
There's a, it's put on...
Is there any way we can do like a reverse nine-one-one to let them know?
Uh, I've talked to Martin about, uh, looking into that. Uh, I don't have any answers for that right now.
I mean, what would happen if that happened up on thirty-two there in St. Jude Industries' bag of ice, and they don't know a thing about it, and here they got...
If St. Jude Industries' water is affected, if St. Jude Industries' water is affected, I call Brenda personally.
Okay, that's fine, but residents in St. Jude didn't know anything about it, got up, gonna eat their breakfast, and, well, the one guy said his daughter from St. Louis called him, she heard it, so...
Yeah, we make numerous, make effort in numerous different ways. Uh, when I have it on Facebook, it's on Twitter, uh, channel seven ninety-eight, it's on the AM radio station. Uh, if it's a small area, we use door hangers, a real small area, we'll knock on doors. We're not required by ordinance, by no means, to notify the customers in an emergency. Uh, you know, we do those steps anyway, but, you know, we always work hard and we work fast to try to restore the customer service to them, and for the majority of the people, they understand.
I just wondered if they can notify by, like I said, a nine-one-one or whatever? They get up in the middle of the night and drink a glass of water and get sick? Who's responsible?
Does anybody know, I don't know how a reverse nine-one-one works, does it just go out?
Neither.
Everybody that signed up for it? Or could you, can you target?
I don't know.
That's the second time it's kinda been brought up. I, I can't even imagine the technology necessary to target, like, four houses, or, you know what I mean, or a neighborhood.
You wouldn't have had nine-one, reverse nine-one-one.
Eric, you're, you're on the nine-one-one.
There's so many people that don't have landlines.
It's a text-caster thing.
Yeah, I don't have a landline either. Most people don't. I shouldn't say that, some people don't.
It could be segregated by, by county, I mean, they could split all, all county residents.
I don't wanna know.
Which, I know.
In the middle of the night, that...
I don't know. Uh, so it really goes back down to, and, and I guess I could check with Alan and see if, if, if they can set up a separate group for that and the residents that are in that area.
And that was brought up also with the flooding of the Gavory Creek.
Right.
And the, the houses right there that, that are, you know, involved.
I, I'll, I'll research that and see if that'd be possible and forward the information.
And how does that work? If you have a cellphone, do you have to, it's like, sign up for it?
Yes, yes, you can, you can either go on, I, we believe, I believe we have a link on our website, on the city's website.
Okay.
Uh, that they can make application to get on, uh, established with text caster.
I should pay better attention to our website.
Well, and...
It's embarrassing that I don't know what's on our website.
I'll need to see if maybe they can, they can add some field to say, you know, this is our particular group of interest, you know, like, uh...
I'll go look at my picture.
You can sign up for, for just weather, you know, any, any severe weather situations. I get every time a road closes here or St. Francis County, so I know that they can set different groups, but I don't know how many different groups they can set.
That's a good point, Don. Someone, does it take for the boil water to go into a fast after you find the water leak, or the break or whatever?
Uh, once we find the water leak, if pressure is above twenty PSI, which is twenty pounds per square inch, uh, we don't have, we're not required by the state to report anything or issue a low boil advisory for low water pressure. Once the water pressure, once we shut the water main down, you know, your water pressure will drop below twenty PSI. From that moment on, there is a boil advisory issued. It doesn't become a boil order until, uh, the results from a bacteriological sample's returned, and, so, usually within twenty-four hours if that's returned.
Well, this particular day, it was like three o'clock in the afternoon when there was no water pressure, and, so, I didn't know. Resident St. Jude asked me, it's not even my ward, but I told him I would ask, and I did, and I, thank you for your answers.
So Steve, but you're not saying, not every water break requires a boil water order? No, no, uh, not very many water main breaks require a boil order. Uh, we issue what's called a boil advisory. It doesn't indicate that there's anything wrong with the water, uh, it's just to let you know that we had a main break, we are waiting on the results of a bacteriological sample, and, uh, there's no concern until that sample's returned, so, until the results are returned. If you feel the need, if it makes you comfortable to boil your water, uh, that's what the advisory is for.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thanks. Other business, we have a approval of a liquor license for Dollar General two one zero four zero, highway thirty-two, to sell all kinds of intoxicating liquor in the original package.
I'd use a magnifying glass.
I like to never...
I don't know why, it's so small and you can't really read it.
They, she, I emailed her the application and she filled it out, uh, she probably filled it out online on the computer and sent it back, it's why it's so small. I apologize.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, any other comments? And if we could go into closed session to discuss real estate matters?
Real estate.
I can motion to a cur.
Second.
Alderman Codwell.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnys Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yep.
Channel seven and ninety-eight TV and web broadcasting are made possible through contributions and donations from viewers like you. Thank you for your support.